The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th meeting. First of all, as everyone is aware, I'd like to have a moment's silence for the Queen, so if we could stand and do that, that would be great. Okay, thank you so much, everyone, for that. Okay, under Presentations, we have Solar Facility Engagement. We have Christine Enmark with us tonight from Sask Power. Christine, welcome. Thank you for coming, and please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you so much. So yeah, like I mentioned, I'm Christine Enmark from Sask Power. I'm with our Stakeholder Consultation and Public Engagement Team. Unfortunately, my colleague is out sick today, so it'll just be me, and hopefully I can speak to her as part of the project just as well. As I'm sure you are aware, Sask Power is in the process of finding an independent power producer, an IPP, to build a 100-megawatt solar facility in the Estevan area. We secured seven-quarter sections near Boundary Dam earlier this year for this project, and interested IPPs have participated in a request for supplier qualifications. So that stage of the project just finished, and we had 11 IPPs qualify to move forward into the next stage, which will be the Request for Proposals. We evaluate our IPPs on things like experience, financial capability, indigenous ownership, environmental impact, price, and stakeholder engagement. So why I'm here today is to talk about that stakeholder engagement piece. Sask Power is going to be conducting all the initial engagement work on behalf of the IPPs for the project. So we've asked that the IPPs not contact local community representatives such as yourselves and other stakeholders in the community. Everything should be coming through Sask Power, and then we'll provide it to the IPPs as part of their Request for Proposals, and then they can address that when they submit their proposals into the competition. So what I'm here today to start the process on is to get feedback on those questions that I provided in that handout, so on the back on the second page. Questions we're kind of interested in as we start setting up for our engagement work is we'd like to know what you want IPPs to know about the project in general, about the facility area, about the impacts to your community, basically anything you want the IPPs to know, what can we filter back to them? When do you think we should be meeting in the community about this? Do you have any suggestions about where we should be meeting with people and how we should be meeting? Should we be providing virtual, in-person? What's the best for your community? And who else should we be talking to? So I know this is very quick. Feel free to take some time to collect your thoughts. All the contact information on the sheet that you're provided comes back to me, so I will see it and we'll share it back, but if you have any thoughts tonight, I'm happy to record them. And obviously, I'll keep you looped in as we move forward with this process and start planning to be back out here to talk about this project. So with that, that's my spiel. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them as best I can.
Okay, first off, Christine, in answer to some of your questions, usually if we have an open house, we would have it at the multipurpose room, and we'd give prior notice. That's a big room over at Affinity, and we could house quite a few people there. And as far as other stakeholders, I'm sure you're already in touch with the RM.
Yes.
And when we do have the open house, all of the people from the RM and the city, of course, would be invited. And I guess the only comment we had early on, first of all, we appreciate this project. This will bring jobs to our community, and we'd like to thank you and SBC for bringing this forward. We appreciate that. And the only question we did have was, would it be possible to have this, instead of having it on farmland, have it on some of the land that SBC owns presently? And I think we've probably already been answered that, that maybe they have to put piles down, and the ground maybe was too, with a lot of the areas having been dug out with the draglines before, that maybe it was too unstable, I think was kind of what we were told.
Yeah, so there's concern with some of that reclaimed coal land area, that the geotechnical work that we need to be done would take more to address than maybe we understand at this point, but I think the project team is looking at investigating and seeing what they could do in the future using that land, but just for this project, there's too much uncertainty around that.
Okay, thank you. We'll open the floor. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, can you just clarify, is this a Sask Power project, and somebody else is building it for you, or is somebody else building it? And with that, who will own the facility and who will own the property?
So Sask Power is having an IPP build it, so the IPP will operate it through the full lifespan. They'll own the solar panels and stuff like that and be fully responsible for decommissioning it. Sask Power buys the energy through a power purchase agreement, but we own the land for this one, or, yeah, so we have the option for the land for this project right now, and then we'll lease it, I believe, is how they're going to do that to the successful IPP.
So it'll be RM's length, and it'll be independent?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ford, then Counselor Wallyser.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just speaking to the when should we meet with the community, because this is on farmland, and we are right in the middle of peak harvest season, I think it would be very much appreciated if it was waited until after harvest, and I know you guys might be on a tighter deadline than that, but I think there's going to be a lot of feedback from the people of the RM, so I think it would be good to have it after.
Thank you. Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wallyser.
Thank you, Your Worship. Some other solar projects in the Saskatchewan region have included a component that provides for education for community members to develop their skills in this area. Is that something that's being considered for this project?
That is something that we can put into the information that we provide back to the IPP, that that's something that this community would be interested in, and then when we evaluate, we could see how the IPPs were trying to meet one of those pieces, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I think the one of the most, the big elephant in the room when dealing with this to convey back to the IPP would be, just obviously, we're in a community that's transitioning and dealing with what the future of coal is going to look like. Obviously, one has nothing to do with another, and that's something we're trying to make sure is conveyed with this project, is that this is not taking away from our coal or firepower plant or anything this is on top of, as there's a growing need for electricity in our province, so this is an add-on, which is great for our community, but certainly something I think the IPP would want to know is that this topic is somewhat sensitive to people, because there is some concern about what job loss and things like that is, to make sure that as we go about that, we approach it in the positive light of this will not take away or put an end towards what we currently have. That's a different discussion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank, Counselor Broba.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for coming tonight. So when you say IPP, does Sask Power already buy power from other independent power producers?
Yes, we do. We have a couple other solar facilities, smaller scale, 10 megawatts each, and then a few wind facilities that we buy through power purchase agreements with IPPs.
Okay, thanks. So this isn't the first, so that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, I think we toured Counselor Broba, that one other regina, so they have had some success in that, and perhaps one of the other stakeholders that we could look at, Christine, would be our indigenous friends down the road. We've got experience with Ocean Man. We've worked with them before. Some of the other bands, we have not, but it would probably be good to consult with them as well. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Your Worship. Could you give some idea of the number of jobs during construction and the number of permanent jobs after it's completed?
I really can't speak to that. I can see what the IPPs, what their plan would be, but because it's them that would be building it and operating it, I don't know what their plans would be at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cernic.
Thank you, Your Worship. What size of investment would this be for a 100-megawatt solar project?
I'm not sure. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, as Counselor Frank alluded to, any segue that we can, get involved with SBC. We've already talked to Minister Carr. We want to get together with Sask Power, with the ministry, and with the federal government, and get a timeline in place as to 2030, what does that look like? We probably don't have enough baseload power at that time, in my opinion. I think we'll have to keep running. For how long, we don't know, but it's that sense of uncertainty that is bothering our people out at the mines, out at SPC, the fact that there doesn't seem to be any certainty at all, other than come 2030, no one seems to know what's going to happen. So as we, you know, work toward that date, we would really like to get the federal government involved with the ministry and with SBC, and get together, collaborate, and see what we can do to give some type of certainty come 2030. Because as you would, you can imagine, with the amount of jobs we're talking, over 1,000 jobs, well-paying jobs, and at least another 1,000, probably 1,500 supplemental, you know, that's a huge hit to our community. So I think that's all we had. Any other questions, comments from members of council? If not, thank you so much, Christine, for coming out tonight. I know your counterpart couldn't make it, so you were very brave to come into the lion's den by yourself, so we appreciate that. Are you traveling back tonight?
Yes, I am.
If so, please have a safe trip back. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And we look forward to working with you to bring this project to fruition.
Great, thank you.
And you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but I know you have a long ways to go, so thank you. Okay, could we next have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda? Counselor Frank? Seconded by Counselor Cernic. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes that were held, the minutes of the council meeting held on August 22nd? Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Wallyser. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under Original, Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have the council appointments for 2023. We've already discussed this and opened, and thank you for council's dialogue, discussion, back and forth. I think everybody, for the most part, is happy, but if anyone would like any changes or suggestions, now would be the time. I see two hands up already. Counselor Broba, and then Counselor Wallyser.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to clarify on here, it does say that I'm moving to the hospital board, but it should say that I'm moving to the hospital board in January, right?
Okay.
Because that's when Counselor Ford and I will switch off from the police board to the hospital board.
Okay, that's a very good point, and thank you for clarifying that. These appointments really, for the most part, do not take place till the New Year. I know Dave made the comment, and he's right, we did kind of drop the gun, but budget's coming up, we've got busy things coming up on the agenda, so.
And just to clarify, sorry, Your Worship, one of the main reasons is because a lot of the boards that we sit on, their season starts in the fall.
Yes.
And so then, when we're transitioning in January, what happens is you have a counselor that's coming in cold.
Yes.
So we appreciate, yeah.
Potentially, yeah, that's right. And that was the other reason, and I don't know if we explained that to you, Dave, but that was the other reason, to be more timely and more informative, not only for the boards and council is going on, but for council themselves. So hopefully, it'll work out better. But we would like the suggestion that we're very timely and on top of things, because we don't hear that a lot, but that's great, thank you. We'll run with that. Counselor Wallyser.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to ask that Counselor Frank and I switch from, currently I've been assigned to the Arts Council Board, and Counselor Frank has been assigned to the Humane Society. Counselor Frank has already served four years on the Humane Society, so for variety for his sake, but also consistency for the Arts Council, where he's been for about three months, we think this would be a good swap.
Okay, are you suggesting, Counselor Frank, 18 dogs is enough? You don't want to take any more dogs?
I can't adopt anymore. My wife will not allow me. No, it's really, you know, when I was on the Humane Society, they made me go out in the kayak on the Duck Derby to push the, and that's cold, I don't want to do that anymore. No, I have great love for the Humane Society. I had a great time on that board. However, I was working with the Arts Council and kind of mentioned that this change might be coming up, and they were a little shocked, because I had only just joined and was looking at that, thinking, you know what, actually, this would probably make a little more sense for some variety, and so this Counselor Wallyser agreed, and so it works out great for both of us.
Okay, well, thank you both for that, and we'll make that notation and move forward. Thank you. Okay, next, under Original, Communications, Delegations, and Petitions.
Can we accept the motion?
Oh, she, okay. City Clerk would like a motion on that. Okay, thank you. Counselor Broba, seconded by Counselor Wallyser. All in favor? Carried. I guess it is a change. We'll make it official. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, City Clerk. So next, we have from EPYC, the Request for Support for Funding. What's a wish of council on that? Counselor Broba, then. Counselor Wallyser.
Thank you, Your Worship. I believe this letter is actually asking us for a letter of support, not funding, so they're not actually asking for any financial support this time. What they're asking for is that, as a city, we would give them a letter of support in their journey of actually looking for grants and different types of funding elsewhere, which is a good thing, so I would like to make the motion that we do a letter of support and send that on to the Estevan Youth Center.
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor Broba. And I think we had agreed, if they raise 10, we would match it. Did we not already do that?
Yes, we just, yes, we just did that.
City Treasurer?
Yes, they sent me proof that the.
Need your microphone on.
Yes, they had sent me proof that the United Way had given them a grant, so we gave them their second $10,000 for the year.
Okay, thank you, thank you, City Treasurer. So we've already given them 20. This will be a letter to get more support, not from us, but from the community.
Right, when they're doing their grant writing, it's just nice if the city shows support behind the youth center, and so that's what I think she was looking for, so I would definitely make the motion that we support that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Broba. And did I see your hand up, Counselor Wallyser?
Yes, Your Worship. I will second that motion. I would like us to also include in a separate letter to them when our budget process is, so that they do have advance notice if they are planning to request another grant from the city this year.
Okay. Okay, so we've got the motion, ready for the question? Any other comments? If not, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, next, under Original, Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have the GLF Cart Report for July of 2022. Any questions or comments on that? Counselor Wallyser.
Thank you, Your Worship. The leaves are turning, and they're starting to fall, and I've been receiving many questions about when our fall free landfill weekend is booked for.
Okay, thank you for that. It will be October 15th? 15th? Thank you for clarifying that.
I think it's three days, I believe it's.
Yes, it's Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, or was it Friday?
It's Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
I need to help with my calendar, it only goes till September. My calendar is so good. I have backup one.
Okay.
It's October 14th, 15th, 16th, I believe.
14th, 15th, and 16th, and I think City Manager can clarify that, so thank you for bringing that up. Super. Okay, did we get the motion, City Clerk, for the report?
I would second it.
Just, okay, Counselor Clark, thank you for seconding. Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Cernic.
So just kind of with the leaves coming up, too, I do believe last year we had a leaf bin on Sixth Street, did we not? Did that go over, or did we look in there?
Yes, Counselor Cernic, there was a compost bin that we tried. It ended up having more other garbage in it than compost. I can talk to Norm Mack and see if we're looking to do that again. I don't think it was as well received as we thought, but I can get that information back.
Yeah, that's basically what I was looking for.
Yeah, we can get a report back on that. Unfortunately, with the compost, especially in a larger bin, if you get some contamination, it pretty much wrecks the whole amount, so. Okay, thank you for that. Moving forward, written reports of committees. We have from the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, the minutes of June 27th. Could we have a motion to accept those, please? Counselor Clark? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Cernic. Counselor Clark, would you like to bring anything up?
First, yes, we had a, at the last meeting, we went through each division and went through the problem areas within each division. The primary ones within the division that I represent is from north of Estevan to the Lantman, from the bypass to Lantman, then from Boundary Dam Corner to Outtram, and the next one was the Roche Percy one. So each of those have been nominated and put forward as areas that need work. They also asked us to put in, they have a segment one, which is smaller areas. I've nominated an area from the corner by Boundary Dam for about the two or three kilometers after that, where they would be able to widen and make that road over the hill and the narrow bridge. They're just nominations, so that if there's a chance to do them, that they know about them. So basically, the areas are all put forward, and it's now waiting for budget, which is anywhere from one to five years or whatever, and then you start over again, I guess. So we had a really good meeting where everybody went through that to see what was out there, and most roads that needed work are all nominated within this corner of the province.
Okay, thank you for that information, Counselor Clark. And we got the motion, did we vote on it, City Clerk? We did? We haven't voted? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have the Creighton Lodge, minutes of July 4th. Could we have a motion on that, please? Thank you, Counselor Wallyser. Counselor Frank, seconded. Any questions or comments? Counselor Broba, anything coming from Creighton Lodge you'd like to bring up?
I am the manager of Creighton Lodge, but Counselor Wallyser is the city rep, so she might have something.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go, Counselor Wallyser.
Creighton Lodge had quite a busy summer, most recently spent celebrating with a barbecue this last week, and Counselor Frank will now be serving the city in that position.
Okay, good, thank you. And I know you will be missed, and I'm sure Counselor Frank will shoulder up to the wheelbarrow and make things happen.
All right, as long as the management there keeps doing such a great job, I don't think I'll have much of a challenge, so.
Okay. And yes, I heard that went over very well, the barbecue. Counselor Broba.
Thank you, Worship. I was just going to expand on the barbecue. It was actually about 110 people we had on Friday, so unfortunately, I had to miss the AC Dev Board meeting that you guys had here, but it was with Estevan Diversified Services, so about 50 people from them came over, and then we had about 50, and then we had MNP, who MNP actually donated a 4-HD to half to Estevan Diversified Services and half to Creighton Lodge, so we appreciated that, and we worked together, and we hosted the barbecue, so thank you to MNP.
That is great, absolutely. MNP do a great job in our community. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from Engineering, Pine Avenue and King Street Intersection Development, and we have Kafloon here to answer any questions. So we've got the tenders, Jenco Asphalt with a low tender at $60,535. Kafloon, did you want to speak to that before we move forward, or anything you'd like to say? If not, you're here for any questions, any Q and A?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Okay, what's a wish of council on this? Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Worship. Do I understand that the Turnbull one would do the whole thing without pavement? They would actually cement the area? And is there a, I guess, a quality, if you use concrete, does it last a lot longer than the asphalt, or does that come into the discussion at all?
Okay, Kafloon?
Counselor, yes, it does. Concrete outlasts asphalt many, many times. It costs a bit more, and it lasts longer, but this is under federal budget, I think. Our account is limited, yeah.
Okay, City Manager?
Thank you, Worship, for clarifying. Counselor Clark, yeah, this is being funded under Coal Transition Infrastructure Funds, so it was put on Sask Tender and works, and it has more stringent guidelines into what can be done, and it can't be improved to what it was before. It's to essentially make the intersection just accessible for the mall rehabilitation that's happening. So I think in this case, we would have to choose the lowest tender, as it is a federal grant funding, but certainly, as we move forward, if there is concrete proposals for other city works, we can definitely consider longevity as a part of it.
Absolutely. Thank you, City Manager. And yeah, normally, we would, Counselor Clark, look at this very seriously, because concrete does outlast the pavement, but again, as mentioned, we have to stick to the guidelines very carefully. Counselor Broba?
Thank you, Worship. So to the City Manager, with this funding, we will still get the funding if this is done in the spring, and also, will there not be any overages next spring? So if we accept it for the spring, because they said they can do it in the spring, they'll stick with this price?
Thank you, Counselor Broba. So the initial guideline was the end of September. We got it extended to the end of October to complete the asphalt works. They've indicated that now the concrete is not till 2023, so once this is approved, I will have to go back to the federal government and ask for an extension of either prepayment before their year-end of March 31st. They usually do not extend funding past their fiscal year, which is March 31st, so I have yet to have those conversations, but I can clarify at the next meeting, once they give me a firm answer. They usually work fairly well, as long as we can expense everything within the current fiscal year and get reimbursement at that point, so.
Okay, and so if we were to say, because I'm assuming the concrete is the curbing and that type of thing, so if we only got funding for the asphalt and the concrete had to come out of the city funds, how much would that be? Or would we even perceive this project if that happened?
I'll let Kafloon talk that. I think we would still need to proceed with the project. The main cost of this is the streetlights that are in there, and those were worded in previous tender, so I think we would not want to give up any of that funding. And I do think Prairie's Can will work with us on the funding for that, that I don't think city coppers will have to pay for that in the spring, but I can get the report back to you next.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Okay, Kafloon, would you like to lighten that up? Talk about that a little? What City Manager just said, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, okay, thank you. You've added a few words today, but no problem. Counselor Cernic.
Thank you, Worship. Does the concrete or curving, does that include closing off the intersections that are going in and out of the mall currently?
So this intersection is Pine Avenue, so there is no intersection right now. So we are creating a brand-new intersection with four-way traffic lighting. That was our contribution to the mall development that's happening. So this is totally funded by the federal government, so basically, there will be, this intersection does not exist right now.
So that would be separate.
Yeah, City Manager?
Thank you, Worship, Counselor Cernic. So that is private property, so I believe in their plans that the other accessibility options into the mall would be closed off, and they would want everyone to go to the main Pine Avenue. Intersections will be wider, but until that point, it's kind of their baby to kind of proceed when they want to close those intersections, but I believe that was part of the plan. So I can also get a report from First Aberdeen Properties, who owns the mall, to get a little more clarification on what their process looks like.
And also, sorry.
Go ahead.
Also, we will put jersey barriers till it's fully constructed, till it's ready for use. Right now, we will use the money and then build it up, but it will not be available for public use. Even if we put the lights, we'll be covering them with cover material till it's fully ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank, you have another question?
Yeah, thanks for having me. Yeah, thanks worship. Further to that, I guess I would maybe want to, because I, I agree with what councillor Cernick's saying. The one kind of closer to Soobees is probably not an issue, but having those two entrances into the mall so close together would probably be an, an issue. I'm kind of assuming the mall is intending to close that off, but perhaps maybe within discussion with the mall and then our traffic committee, we could just, I would just think if those two are both open, that would be a little, certainly something I'd want to see the traffic committee, or committee kind of discussing and see what our options are. But I'm kind of guessing that's the mall's intention is to close that, that one kind of closes to Tim Hortons off. But yeah, we'll have some of those discussions and if we need to, we can pass that to traffic.
Yeah, and this was their idea with all of the money they're spending in the mall, which is considerable, this is something that they want to.
I'm so grateful for this decision. It, it will make entering the mall a heck of a lot easier. I know I was chatting with the maintenance manager at the mall about kind of the plan for this and how much nicer it's going to be. I'm very grateful for the amount of money the mall is putting into our community. So this is, this is a very worthwhile contribution, especially if it's federally funded, so.
Absolutely. Okay, do we have a motion from council to move forward on this? Thank you councillor Cernick, seconded by councillor Wallyser. Any further questions, comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the fire chief, reports for August of 22. Any questions or comments? If not, could we have a motion to accept those, please? Councillor Ford, thank you. Seconded by councillor Clark. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the water services manager, water quality report for August of 22. Could we have a motion, please? Thank you Kafloon, good night. He's such a quiet man. Anyway, do we have a motion? Oh, okay. Was that a motion first? Councillor Roba? Okay, thank you. Have we got a second or to accept the water quality? Thank you councillor Ford. Councillor Roba, question?
Thank you worship. I just wanted to mention, I can't remember if we talked about it in open last meeting, but about the smell that was coming out of the water. I don't believe we received any more concerns about that and it has gone away. So it was nice to see our water report come back. Everything is clear, we're meeting standards. So just to put everyone's mind to ease that we're concerned about that smell, there was no actual harmful anything in the water supply, so that was good.
Thank you councillor Roba, you're absolutely right.
And the other question I have about water is the water tower, is that just about completed?
It's coming very close, city manager.
Yeah, thank you councillor Roba. So you're just finishing some sandblasting on the inside. We will be proceeding with the final pavement portion on Smith Street on September 20th. And they should be there, out of there by October 15th and we'll be wrapping up that project this month.
Yeah, what happened, they had part of the inside done and they had, you know, after the sandblasting and they only had a four-hour window. And they didn't quite get that done, so they had to redo it, but that won't be an extra cost on us.
Thank you worship. Just to expand on that, they did have to get out there because there was lightning. And every time there's lightning identified, they'd have to leave that. So it was kind of interesting to see that they had to get over there, but makes sense.
Yeah, I guess if a lightning bolt, if the big fellow decided to hit our tower, those in it would be roasted. So again, it's a safety concern. Councillor Frank?
Yes, that would be.
And we were up there. Councillor Ford, we were up in that tower, just imagine.
And during a lightning storm too, I mean. Oh goodness. No, I just wanted to say how great the tower looks though. With our Estevan in quotation marks, it just looks sharp and shiny and bright. I, I absolutely love it, so thank you to the team. It looks, looks fantastic. And I'm sure the workings of it are better too, but we, that's above all our heads, so we'll just care about what it looks like.
Yes, they did make a lot of improvements and yeah, it's great. Okay, thank you councillor Frank. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from land development, the zoning bylaw report. And we have Richard here. Thank you Richard, for being present this evening. Anything you would like to say this evening on the zoning?
Sure.
It's a weighty document. I've been assured by council, they have spent many countless evenings without sleep going over it. So you may have some questions, just put it out notice, but please give us your feedback.
Thank you mayor and council. Yes, earlier this spring, you, you were able to see the initial draft of the, of the bylaw. And then we went through referral period. In the last council meeting, I provided a short report explaining suggested amendments to it based on the questions that council offered and other feedback that was received. And so this is now the compiled document from that. What I am hoping for today is if council believes we can move forward, would be consideration of a first reading. From that point, it has to go through a full month of public notification and to stakeholders and what have you. And then there's a public hearing and that'll be an opportunity once again to consider any further changes based on feedback received. With that, mayor, I'm open to any questions that anyone in council may have.
Okay, thank you Richard. You can tell you spent a lot of time on this too. You've got a lot of suggested changes. They all make sense to me, so thank you for that. Any questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Wallyser?
Thank you worship. I did want to highlight the advocacy signs portion that you've put in the report. I appreciate that you went out and found what other communities are doing. I do really like the idea that when a particular stance is being taken, that the person wishing to share that with the community does have to be identified on the sign. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess we should have a motion, city clerk, to accept this report, move forward. Thank you. Thank you councillor Clark. Seconded by councillor Frank. Any further questions or comments? If not, seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And next, we have Richard on the docket for this one as well, and thank you for that, Richard. Land Development Bowie Subdivision, the civic address request. Thank you for spending time on that. The people living over in Bowie Subdivision, if they called an ambulance, the ambulance could not get there. We did not have proper signage, so now we will have proper signage, complete with a sign on the roadway coming into our city, right on 47 North.
Well, the, these, what, what this request for is signage where the driveways for those subdivisions meet the rural road. However, in the last hour, I did receive an email from the RM.
Yeah, we talked to.
Speaking to, actually, was I highlighted city manager, Sisterati Road, Kensington and Suris.
Yes.
It would be helpful if a sign could be put on there. And they were wondering about whether or not that would be a, like a nameplate as, as per city, what city does, or more the rural standard. So it looks like some positive movement on that front and I, I think the residents will thank council and administration for moving that forward with the RM.
Yeah, they already have and we were happy to do it, Richard. And thank, thank you for your part in it. But I understand at each of those opportunities where they do put up the blade, it will be the RM description and not the roadway, correct?
I believe so, because.
This is what they told us.
Because otherwise you have to name the road and then, like, I believe it's quite commonly regarded as Bainfeet Road. I also, I, I've heard Cemetery Road as well.
Yeah.
But this one, I believe is Township Road 25, so.
Right. Okay, thank you. We have some questions. Councillor Frank?
Just regarding that, would it, and I could be totally out base here, but would it not make more sense then to name the roads just so that as future development opens up there, or it's, is it an RM road that we can't?
It's our.
Oh, okay, so this is not something we have to worry about future development within the city?
And, and the other thing councillor Frank, that will, the label that they give on the outside of each roadway that intersects will also coincide with the description that each landowner has been given as well.
Okay, so yeah, so if, if the city were to ever annex that area, then it would be a redist name, but that's a, that's obviously not a today problem, so.
Yeah, and all of these residences, as you're aware, are in the city. That's our last residence.
Okay.
Within the city.
But they connect.
And the roadway in front, that's the grid that we're talking about.
Okay, 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 I understand. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Did you, okay, it looked like you might have a question councillor Roba, so I thought I'd ask, but you don't, so that's great. All in favor?
Nope, we need the motion.
Oh, I'm jumping the gun again.
I'll make the motion, yes, I have to.
Thank you councillor Frank, seconded by councillor Roba. And thank you city clerk for being on top of things. I don't know what we'd do without you. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under introduction of bylaws. As we discussed earlier, we'd like first reading for bylaw 2022-2061. Zoning bylaw, first reading. Could we have a motion for first reading? Then we'll allow that to go to one of our next meetings, get feedback from our public. Richard, you'll have a few open houses, right?
In my report to council, I was going to suggest that we opt for appointments or, or at request of stakeholders, they could meet with us. The reason being is I've been having open houses on this subject since spring of eight, of 2018. And the attendance has dropped off and off and off. And when we had the last referral to the public in the spring of this year, I didn't have a single phone inquiry or in-person inquiry, so.
Well, that means.
I can have an open house, so if council wishes, yes.
No, that, that's fine. It means you've done a good job. You've got all of the malcontents taken care of. Everyone's happy and God bless us everyone, so.
Living the dream, yes.
Live, you're living the dream, as they say, councillor Ford.
Thanks your worship. I think in all reality, we all know probably not a lot of people are going to read this full document. But would it be possible to work with Jaclyn to maybe, you know, highlight a couple of things and put them in our social media every couple of days? So then if people do have concerns or questions, it kind of starts that conversation instead of somebody poring through the whole document for anything they might find.
Sure, perhaps, and that's a good point councillor Ford, perhaps the changes, we could highlight the changes and go over them. Because again, a lot of that was updating, making it more relevant, because this is a living, breathing document. What do you think, Rich?
Yeah, yes, mayor and council, I, I can prepare a brief document on major changes. The other thing I'd like to make council aware of is I started this in November of last year. I made a number, I, I did a mock-up for a number of brochures, so they would be double-sided, either letter size or, or, or eight and a half by, or eight and a half by 14, legal size. On subjects so, such as you want to start up a home-based business, you want to put up a sign, you want to build a house. Here's some of the things that you need to pay attention to. And then those have been put off to the marketing people for, to get it jazzed up, right? Because I'm providing content, content, but she's much better at formatting and style than I am. And so hopefully those will be ready to roll out when this bylaw advances further down the road.
Well, thank you Richard. We'll have to call you Gideon, just like the Gidians that made all of Little Bibles. You made this pocket-sized, God bless you. You know, that must have taken a lot. Anyway, that's great. Okay, are we ready for the motion? All in favor? Carrie? I thought we had a motion.
I was lost motion.
Let's have a motion. Do we have a motion? Thank you councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Ford. I motioned out today, city clerk. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, under public hearings and reports, we have none. Giving notice, Light it Up for National Disability Employee Awareness Month. Thank you for your support last year for the first national Light it Up for NDEM, which is Light it Up for National Disability Employee Awareness Month. And your help in getting the city of Estevan to participate by lighting City Hall purple and blue for the event. And I think councillor Roba, you were the one that brought this forward, thank you for that. My compatriot Lisa Malawani at SARC is aiming to get all of Saskatchewan lit purple and blue for this year's event. Both SARC and ODEM, I love all these acronyms, would appreciate having your support and the city's participation. Again, this year for Light it Up for NDEAM. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you'd mind raising this again with your colleagues again, which you did. So again, thank you for that councillor Roba. We have a motion, go ahead.
I'd like to make that motion, but also just to encourage all the citizens of Estevan that have those Christmas lights or the lights that just light up your house for everyday occasions, to light it up on October 20th with purple and blue in support of workers with disabilities.
Thank you for that councillor Roba. And you've made the motion, have we got a second or? Thank you councillor Wallyser. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Motions from committee this evening, we have none. Consideration of bylaws. We have bylaw 2022-2060, the business bylaw, which we would like to give second and third reading and adoption for use this evening. So could we have a motion, please, for bylaw 2022-2060, business bylaw for second reading? Thank you councillor Wallyser. Seconded by councillor Cernick. At this point, I'll ask if there's any questions or comments. I have to do that in second reading. After that, she's, it's too late. Councillor Roba?
Thank you worship. Just on number 45, if you could look at that, I think the wording needs to be corrected. So it's not a huge change, but just before you put it on the city website. It just says, "Once a trade show license has been obtained, all participating businesses in the trade show shall or included within the trade show license." So I just wasn't sure, it didn't make sense to me.
If the word shall was taken out, it would probably make a lot more sense.
That's what I thought, either the word shall or the word are, yeah. Thank you.
We'll correct that.
Yeah, the only thing, shall is a mandatory requirement, may is not, but yeah, as long as you're both happy with that.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because to me, it's whether or not, if shall, if we keep shall in, it means you have to do it. And if you put are included within the trade show licenses, maybe, we still have the teeth in the bylaw. But I just thought I would leave that up to Richard to decide, but I also just wanted to say I read your documents.
Thanks.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, mayor and council, yeah, historically what's happened is if a person, if a group pulls a permit of that nature out, that serves as a blanket for everybody that's in there, including city people when they're in there selling raffle tickets or getting information from public on bylaws. I've done it myself.
Absolutely. Okay, go ahead councillor Roba.
Thank you worship. Speaking of blankets, I just wonder about the business licenses in the city of Estevan. If I run a business and let's say I'm selling something and then I invite someone else into my business, do they automatically fall under my business license, or does each person in that business have to have their own individual business license?
The license is to the business and doesn't relate to the number of employees, whether it's, the only difference in that would be the home-based business where the people working in the business in the home must be residents of the home. They can have subcontractors outside of the home, but does that answer your question? Hopefully, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, you're lucky, Richard, you got that one through. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Okay. Everyone's in favor of that second reading? All in favor? Thank you. Now, one of our last orders of business this evening, third reading and adoption for use of bylaw 2022-2060, business bylaw. Thank you councillor Clark, seconded by. You guys have been a little bit slow over here, a little bit tardy tonight. Thank you. Well, Travis has been, councillor Frank's been pretty good, okay? Councillor Frank's been pretty good. Okay, thank you councillor Ford. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Inquiries. I know we've all had lots of inquiries on healthcare and not only in our community, throughout our province and as well as across Canada. And it is a hot point topic right now. And I know the province and we thank them for that, are hiring, I believe, a thousand nurses, doctors, other healthcare providers, which hopefully will help meet the need. I'm not sure where these people are coming from, how long that timeframe will take, but it's definitely needed. I know our healthcare system is, is under siege right now. And we've had, again, I know all of us, lots of questions and comments. all of us, lots of questions and comments. I believe our people working there are doing their very best under a lot of duress. But I know I was raised a question, and I'm just going to toss it out there. We are an affiliate here in Estevan with the Emmanuel Care, and I know most of the rest of the province are Saskatchewan Health Association. They are not an affiliate. I believe the only affiliates are Radville and one or two. Am I right, Counselor Wallyser, in Saskatoon?
St. Paul's Hospital in Saskatoon.
Just St. Paul's, so, okay. So there's Radville, St. Paul's, and us. And I know I've been asked the question. Personally, I believe faith-based is very important, but I've been told that Saskatchewan Health does have a fourth cornerstone of faith as part of their healing. So again, I don't know for sure the advantage, advantages versus the disadvantages of being an affiliate, but I just thought I'd throw it out there. Anyway, we'll open the floor for inquiries. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, your worship. As we've talked about in this council chambers quite often, is mental health awareness. And so mental health awareness and resources in southeast Saskatchewan, it's not readily available for a lot of people. They don't know where to reach out to. So I recently had a conversation with the Rural Partnership Program Coordinator of the Schizophrenic Society of Saskatchewan. So they were reaching out, actually, to find out if somebody was willing to host a meeting. This meeting would be regarding different types of mental health, and where they can go for support, and also how to recognize, how to deal with it. And these, this would be for anyone who's dealing with mental illness, and that could be if you're actually individually affected by mental illness, or if you love somebody that has mental illness, or if you're just interested in the subject matter. You would all be welcome at this meeting. It's going to be near the end of September, and I will be hosting it, so I just need to know who would like to participate. So if you are interested, you can reach out to me on my cell phone, 306-421-7100, or my information's on the city website too, so you can get ahold of me. And I just thought this was very important to bring to Estevan, so that people in southeast Saskatchewan can start to have a conversation here in our hometown.
Okay, do you will have expertise at the meeting, Counselor Vroba?
Yes, it's in partnership with the Rural Partnership Program of Schizophrenic Society of Saskatchewan. So it's not just about schizophrenia, though. It's about all mental illnesses and disorders. There will actually be somebody there with, I believe, usually for sure, somebody with schizophrenia will present, and then I think he said someone else with another mental illness will also present. So they kind of give you their take from a firsthand perspective. But then there'll also be people from the Schizophrenic Society there, and they have a brochure they can hand out with resources. And I was talking with him for a few minutes, and it is amazing what they have out there. So a lot of times when we talk about how we don't have resources for mental health, it's actually just lack of knowledge. We don't know where to go. So I'm hoping this will start the conversation, and if it's a success, then hopefully we move on to have more.
Good. Well, thank you for that, Counselor Vroba. I know there is a stigma. Slowly but surely, mental health, the issues are coming to the forefront because of their importance. A lot of people are ashamed to come forward, but it's very important that people do come forward in order to get help.
Yes, and this meeting may actually take place as a Zoom meeting, as much as I just finished saying I don't like Zoom meetings. That might actually make more people participate too, if they can do it from the comfort of their own home. So if you reach out to me, talk to me, tell me your preference, we will work towards bringing this to Estevan.
Okay, thanks again, Counselor Vroba. Counselor Clark?
Nothing to, no, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wallyser?
Thank you, your worship. Just a big thank you to the parks program this summer. I know parks extended two additional days of swimming at Churchill Park, and the community overwhelmingly supported that decision. I drove by, and there was no space in the pool. I also wanted to remind people that today was the last day that the bathrooms in the parks are open for the season.
Okay, good point. Thank you. Counselor Ford?
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple this evening. I've received a complaint about the crossing down on the pathways between Kensington and Fourth Street. So when you're walking down south on Kensington Avenue, and you press the crosswalk button at Fourth Street, when you're just about to go by the overpass, you get the crossing light only to the end of Fourth Street, and then you're kind of fair game on Perkins Street to make sure you don't get hit when you're walking across. And I just wanted to see if we could take that to the traffic board to find some continuity between the ability to walk down that whole entire stretch without getting ran over. And crazy, Counselor Ford rode her bike up and down that street one day to see how it actually worked. So I'm sure people thought I was absolutely nuts. And then a second thing is, earlier this month, a tragedy struck in Saskatchewan as well, and it's very unfortunate, the things that happened at James Smith Cree Nation. And the chief yesterday of James Smith was actually, he made a call with a bunch of other indigenous leaders, calling on the provincial and the federal government for drug treatment centers on reserves in Saskatchewan and the rest of Canada. And as a city who has a very successful treatment facility with a very, very long waitlist, I do believe that it's important that we also support this request and call for action. And I'm currently in the process of finding out how we can support that, whether it be a letter or some sort of signature on something, but I do believe it's something that we should stand behind. And as soon as I find some information on that, I'll bring it to our next council meeting, or wherever I can bring it up to. There'd be a couple council meetings from then. But I also think tonight that we should also just take a moment of silence for the lives that were lost on September 4th as well.
Absolutely, Counselor Ford. Let's do that, starting right now. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Counselor Cernick?
Thank you, worship. Tonight, just have us some congratulations going out to Suris Valley Theater and Exhibitions Association. They've both had successful seasons, and will be going into their winter planning for 2023. Just want to give a little special shout-out to the Humane Society. They are a very busy group. They are always fundraising and caring for animals, and their season never stops. So just want to say thanks and congratulations to everybody out there.
Thank you, Counselor Cernick. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship, and I just wanted to give a little bit of a shout-out to the Arts Council for, they've got a few programs coming up pretty quickly. Some of their plays and things like that will start kicking in, but primarily this summer, you've noticed our visual arts team, particularly Gailte Zlansvik and the number of the members on board, putting a lot of effort towards some of the murals and things like that you're seeing in town. A good chunk of the murals that have been done are not actually the Arts Council. They are just the member of one artist, or the actors of one artist who's gone out and done that, which is fantastic, but some are the Arts Council that, through him and through a few other artists, you're starting to see. There's a few benches that have been updated, and I believe Pharmasave, the side of Pharmasave is getting changed out pretty quickly here. There's three murals there right now, but they're, they're quite dated, so they're getting changed out for some new ones, as well as some big projects again for next year. So just a huge shout-out to all their hard work, because we're freely seeing quite a, quite an impressive-looking community these days. And to all of the artists who have submitted their art.
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor Frank. Thank you. We'd like to thank all of the artists and all of the hard work, because yeah, it's looking great around our city. Absolutely. And we would also like to thank the Rotary Club for their golf ball drop. I was unable to attend. I was out of town, but again, City Manager did yeoman's work, as he always does, for the Rotary Club, and helped to make it a success, and along with our other members, City Manager. It was a great event.
Yeah, I can echo that. Just thank everybody for supporting that. Proceeds go to Stars Ambulance, as well as Estevan Minor Ball this year. So again, that's just something that Rotary gives back to, and thanks again for everybody supporting. And we did have Amanda Minchin, our head pro, win the prize, and we get to do that at TSM Woodland Golf Club, so it worked out good, so.
Yeah, that was great. And it's nice to see a hometown person winning. That was awesome. Okay, did you have anything you'd like to say, City Manager? No? City Clerk? City Treasurer? Nothing? Okay, we're all quiet this evening. With that, could we have a motion to move it to committee, please? Thank you, Counselor Vroba. Seconded by Counselor Ford. We stand adjourned. Good evening. Thank you.